Good morning. Would you all please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all?
I'd like to welcome everyone to our first meeting of the year in our work session for Wednesday, January 5th. The public may join in today's meeting through the Zoom system. The phone number is 301-715-8592. We're prompted by the operator under the meeting ID of 820-4652-0390 and followed by the pound key. Today's passcode number is 816619. Okay, first, once again, our policy on public comment is to be submitted by writing or also by in our boardroom today. We were asked if you would limit your public comments in Section 2, Agenda 2 Item 2 to Agenda Items only, and then additional public comment will be entertained under Agenda Item 15 prior to our adjournment. Chief, any reports of executive sessions?
No, we're not.
Okay. Moving on to Agenda Item 2, public comment. I understand we did not receive any written.
Right.
I think we'd like to give public comment in the boardroom. Mr. Dopp, good morning.
Good morning.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, gentlemen. Just real quick on the Agenda. These are hiring a new solicitor who was a shuffle for $9,000 a year plus full benefits. I believe that includes the family as well as a part-time solicitor. I'm just curious as to, and I'm sure I'm going to have to put it right, the no request, how much do you guys all spend on benefits for families for part-time employees? I'm sure you don't have that figure in front of you for leaving and answering, but just something to think about, how much these are spending on these part-time employees. And solicitor for $9,000 a year, I thought they were in the ballpark for $3,000 a year. Is there a reason this office gets a little bit bored? Does anybody know? I figured I'd get that response. These have three county solicitors that get paid full-time positions, equivalent to full-time positions, and you have to give all these kickback jobs out for part-time solicitors that essentially do nothing but take away from the taxpayers the full benefits for their family, which is a little ridiculous. Also, there's a $950,000 a year contract agreement that you're going to continue here for the radios. Of course, that's for George's buddy, Bob Green. I don't see Scott Crater here or anybody to give us details on that. Since he has his own lockdown for the radios, the way he's had the contract written, I guess it couldn't be put out on bids. It's a million dollars a year. I mean, is this a kickback for you to attend the Eagles games, George, and go on the RV with them? Because that was never listed in your election forms either, so you better go where you do them. Also, another contract for ANS, another one towards his buddies, was not put out on bids. All these little jobs and millions of dollars given out, and all they are are kickbacks. So, better get the program, guys.
Thank you for your comments.
Nice space eater here, too, to eat.
Thanks, sir. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dopp. Anyone else like to give a public comment? Anne, our Recorder Dees, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm here to present--
Mind not further close to the microphone, so people can hear on the Zoom call.
I'm here to present a contract for the recording system in the Recorder Dees office. This contract will be an upgraded software platform and also include 22 workstations for the office. The most important part of this contract is the cost. It is a new fee structure, which is going to be a monthly fee structure as opposed to the existing per-document fee. We reviewed the past two years of invoices, and the only time the invoices went below the new monthly fee structure was April and May of 2020, which was during the height of the pandemic. This contract will be saving the county approximately $1,000 a month, somewhere upwards of $3,000. I am very pleased to present this contract to the Commissioners Boardroom.
Thank you very much. That's good work, good work. Anyone else want to give a public comment before we move on to Agenda? If not, we'll move on to Agenda Item 3. On behalf of Lisa Stevens, Children and Youth, approval requested to amend the Redco Group Potsville PA Prior Agreement dated September 9th, 2021 to add updated rates for services which were erroneously omitted in the program information received, adjusting five quarter-hour unit rates as follows. Administration at $7.73 per quarter hour. Evaluation assessments at $16.24 per quarter hour. Group at $9.02 per quarter hour. Seed mentoring at $9.02 per quarter hour. Diversity mentoring at $9.02 per quarter hour for the term July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022. Agenda Item 4, on behalf of Engineering, Hardwood Engineer Lisa Mahal. Liquid fuels approved who requested to enter into an agreement with Alfred Benish and Company for the engineering design of County Bridge Number 24, Line Street over Good Spring Creek in Tremont Borough. Bridge Number 24 will be a new single-span bridge. The total cost agreement is $248,000. Is there a motion to approve this?
Second.
On the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovic.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Just might add for information, this is one of the problem areas that occurred. We have flooding that area. It's a bridge with current pillars underneath it, and trees get caught underneath and back the water up, and this will be a big help for some of our flooding problems in that part of the county, so. On behalf of planning zoning, approval of designation of agent resolution, Designated Gary Bender, County Administrator of Schuylkill County's Designated Agent, to execute forms and documents for the purpose of obtaining financial assistance for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. Also, approval of the County Committee Letter for the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program. The County Committee Letter details the minimum contribution that the Schuylkill County will contribute to this plan. In terms of funding, the county is not required to provide any local match. This grant is being made under and through the funding via the disaster declaration. Therefore, the 25% local match will not be paid for by the state. Is there motion for these two requests?
Second.
On the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovic.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Okay. Once again, for Engineering, on behalf of Zoning Hearing Board, approved requested to reappoint Frank Zandgari of Girardville, Pennsylvania, to the zoning hearing board for a term of five years, starting January 1st, 2022, and ending December 31st, 2026. Is there motion for that request?
Second.
On the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovic.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Agenda Item 5, on behalf of Adult Probation Office, Charlie Dunguski, approval of a contract of psychological associates of Schuylkill County LLC to provide counseling services as follow. Psychosexual assessment at $350. Polygraph testing is $400. Individual counseling at $90. Group counseling at $35. And Act 235, testing and interviewing at $250 for a period of one year, beginning January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2022. Also, approval of submission of an application to the Office of Justice Programs of the Pennsylvania Commissions on Crime and Delinquency, request is for grant aid funding for the fiscal year 2021 through 2022.
Could I, if I could, CJ, on that, that is, we've had this grant aid before?
That is an annual grant aid that provided by the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Our award will be $284,131 upon the signature of the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you.
Okay, appreciate that. Agenda Item Number 6, on behalf of our Grant Writer, Cheryl Fuss, approved addendum to the resolution for the fiscal year 2021 CDBG program amendment is to the state the following. The County of Schuylkill acknowledges the following as it relates to its fiscal year 2021 Community Development Block Grant Program. If the community developed block grant funds are determined by the Pennsylvania Department of Community Economic Development to be extended, excuse me, expended on ineligible program costs or do not meet a national objective, the County of Schuylkill agrees to repay the proportion deemed ineligible for non-federal sources adopted by the County of Schuylkill at the regular meeting of January 5th, 2022. Is there a motion requested? Is there a motion for that?
Second.
Second.
Before I do the roll call, I want to make a statement here. This is why it's sometimes difficult to get involved in a CDBG programs, because the penalty is if it's not done properly, the county holds the responsibility to pay it back. So, several of these grant programs that we got involved with, we did bring consultants in because it was not done properly, and the grant money was given out for COVID relief to a person, and it was done wrong. It was ours to pay back. And every step of the way, I know that Mr. Bender and Paul Booper worked closely with the DCD to make sure our applications were correct, and so far, we got through some major programs as a major allocations and not at any point in time have been asked to pay something back. So, that's a, you know, a big commitment, because like I say, if it's wrong, it's our fault. Okay, you have a motion, a second, on the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovic.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Also, on behalf of our Grant Writer, approval to award a contract to BlogNet Incorporated for $70,500 for a community developed block grant project at the Frackville Senior Center for American Disability Act improvements. Moving on to Agenda Item 7, on behalf of Scott Crater and 911 Communications Director, approval to extend agreement with no price increase to Greens Communications of Pottsfield for 24/7, 365-day per-year radio system in the amount of $950,000 in court payments of $237,500 each due on February 28th, May 31st, August 31st, November 30th of each of the years. Agreement shall be for five years from January 1st, 2022 to December 31st, 2026. Is there motion to approve this request?
Second.
On the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovic.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Agenda Item Number 8, on behalf of our Recorder Dees, Ann Dudish, approval requested for a five-year contract with the current software vendor Avenue Enterprise Solutions LLC, commencing on December 31st, 2021, and will continue through December 30th, 2026. The management system cost is $5,585 per month for 60 months. They provide technology products and services to the Recorder Dees office.
Mr. Chairman, on that, Paul or Anne, just a question. Does that money come out of the technology fund, or is that something that is budgeted?
It's a budgeted item, comes out of our printing and duplication expense item line.
Okay, so that's not the technology fund?
That is not part of the program.
Okay, thank you.
And once again, as you explained, you're currently on a per-document fee, and you and your staff got looking at that, and they reached out, they offered us a monthly fee as opposed to per-document, which, with the exception of two months where everybody deemed that real estate transactions were not essential functions, and there was no title search or no transit, other than that, you're going to have a monthly service. So, once again, I commend you for you and your staff for researching this and bringing this back to the courthouse. We can use every dollar we can get to keep this place going. Any questions around that? If not, I'll move on. On behalf of our agricultural program coordinator, Brittany Moore, on our Agenda Item Number 9, on recommendation of the Agricultural Land Preservation Board, approval is requested to reappoint John Alabora and Bill Wery to the Schuylkill County Agricultural Land Preservation Board for a term of three years to expire December 31st, 2024. Just a recommendation from the program Agricultural Land Preservation Board, approval requested to reappoint Keith Bossler as chairman of the board, and Hector as vice chairman of the board, to the Schuylkill County Agricultural Land Preservation Board for a term of one year to expire December 31st, 2022. Moving on.
Just a question on that, Al, just a question. If they're their own board, they appoint their own chair and vice chair, is that correct? So, we don't, it's not for us to approve. Okay, thank you.
So, once again, well, then, we'll be only approving the reappointment of John Alabora and Mr. Wery, right? I'll contact Brittany Moore and then make that point on to them, so. Moving on to Agenda Item 10, on behalf of Public Works, Mr. Kevin Mahal, our director, approval agreement with ANS Energy Systems, Shend O.P.A., in the amount of $13,340 for the term of January 1st, 2022 to July 31st, 2022 to installing Dyakon package unit for the Commissioners Boardroom. Is there motion for that request?
Second.
On the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovic.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
And Mr. Bender, once again, these types of contracts are post-cards approved, correct?
Public work project, with not required.
Yes, okay. On behalf of Solicitor's Office, Agenda 11, anything to report, Mr.? Thank you, sir. I'll move on to our Finance Officer, Paul Booper, on our Agenda Item 12. Morning, Paul.
Commissioners, good morning. This morning, I have 11 budget adjustments I'd like to present. All 11 budget adjustments are for the prior year. Majority of them involve transferring budgetary authority between line items within the respective departmental budget, except for one. There is one that does involve a transfer from contingency. Each budget adjustment does have an explanation on the bottom. The first three are on behalf of the District Justices. The first one is for $30. Next, $70. Next, $160. The next two are on behalf of 911. $75. Next two are on behalf of the courts. Next is on behalf of drug and alcohol. Next is on behalf of Recorder Dees. $5,302. Commissioners, this is the budget adjustment that involves a transfer from contingency. I'd like to elaborate on that a little bit. They are charged, as Anne indicated previously, under the current contract. It's not a fixed contract. It's a per-fee or per-document fee that they're charged for imaging and for processing. When we put the 2021 budget together, we could only estimate the number of documents that would be imaged and processed for 2021. The number of documents exceeded what we actually anticipated, so therefore, there is an additional cost involved to the process of those documents. The invoice that we currently have in hand that we'd like to pay is for November. I anticipate probably I will be coming back to the board for probably another transfer from contingency to cover the December invoice.
Okay, but once again, this, once we get through these two months, the per-fee, the per-document fee, this will no longer be a problem, because it'll be an annual fee, a monthly fee, which Hank can put in her budget, and we won't have to worry about adjusting it later on.
That's my understanding. Can we confirm?
Yeah, is that also, there was, on the contract, there was a supplemental schedule also with digital fees and all that kind of stuff? That's in addition to the $5,000, correct?
Correct. Which exists on the existing contract also.
Okay, that is consistent with what you have right now. Thank you.
Next budget adjustment is on behalf of the prison for $5,308. The last one I'd like to present is on behalf of the Office of Senior Services for $470,000. Because of the dollar amount involved, Commissioners, would you like me to comment on that budget adjustment?
Yes, please.
Commissioners, what our Executive Director and her staff do periodically is they review their budget and their expenditures to see if there is any potential for savings, and in this particular case, in their review, they identify there were some savings in some particular line items, and what they like to do is redirect those savings back into program services and offer those services to eligible seniors within our county.
Great. And we talked to Deanna, Gary, or Paul, she does a great job down there, and her whole staff does, so thank you.
Sure.
Are there any other questions for Paul? Approval is requested on, approve and delegate contract authorities contract designees to Gary Bender, Paul Booper, and Chris Kearns to approve contracts for all county business involving amounts below the bid limit threshold for a calendar year 2022. The bid limit threshold is $21,900. The telephone quote threshold is $11,800. Is there a motion to approve these, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, 12 requests for budgetary adjustments? And also the administrative authority for bids. Second, on the question roll call.
So, that will be, we're doing both at the same time.
Yes.
For Gary Bender, Paul Booper, and Chris Kearns to approve contracts for all county business involving amounts below the limit threshold for calendar year 2022, and they're listed in our agenda.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep, a motion from Mr. Hess, Mr. Halkovic, the second, Mr. Hess. On the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovic.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Thank you. Moving on to Agenda Item 13, on behalf of our County Administrator, Mr. Bender, request the Board of Commissioners to ratify the designated approved contracts for the month of December 2021. They are attached. Is there a motion to approve this request?
Second.
On the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovic.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Moving on to Agenda Item 14, our Human Resources Office. Heidi, good morning, Heidi, happy new year.
Good morning, Commissioners, happy new year. Motions are requested for the following items in Children and Youth, to appoint Jamie Merkel as a County Social Services A2 at an hourly rate of 13.7112, effective January 17th, 2022. Also, a motion is requested for the Solicitor's Office to transfer Paul Doughty to the position of part-time Assistant County Solicitor at an annual salary of $38,683, effective January 3rd, 2022, from the position of Solicitor for the Controller's Office. And all appointments are pending drug tests and physical, and all actions involving salary or for positions being created are pending salary board approval.
Okay, thank you. So, on behalf of Children and Youth, the appointment of Jamie Merkel as a County Social Services A, Level 2, at an hourly rate of 13.7112. The effective date would be January 17th, 2022. And Solicitor's Office, transfer Paul Doughty from the Controller's Office to the Assistant County Solicitor's position part-time at an annual salary of $38,683, effective January 3rd, 2022. Is there a motion to approve these two?
Second.
On the question roll call.
Commissioner Heatherington.
Yes.
Commissioner Halkovic.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
I believe you have some information.
Yes, for information, in the District Attorney's Office, there's a transfer for Shelby Grabowski Postdeter to the position of part-time Assistant District Attorney, effective January 1st, 2022, from a part-time district, or per diem, branch Assistant District Attorney position. In Court Administration, the resignation of Mary Timpany as a law clerk, effective January 14th, 2022. Also, in Court Administration, the resignation of Nanette Ketrick as a per diem court reporter, effective December 30th, 2021. In Children and Youth, the resignation of Zachary Kaylor as a county caseworker 1, effective December 17th, 2021. In Adult Probation, we have the resignation of Dylan Hughes as an Adult Probation Officer 1, effective December 30th, 2021. Also, in Adult Probation, the appointment of Dylan Stefan as an unpaid intern for the time period of January 10th, 2022 to April 22nd, 2022. In the Controller's Office, the appointment of Sudhir Kattel as the Solicitor, effective January 10th, 2022. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. That brings us then to, excuse me, additional public comments. I understand we did not receive any written comments, right, Chief?
No, correct.
I'll open it up to the, anyone on the board would like to give public comment. Mr. Dopp.
Just coming back to the weekly request to find out where the CARES Act money went. I've asked this now for going on eight months. Last time I seen you, Boots, before the audit, you said you'd get with me, and you were working on getting the figures together, and you would sit down and explain to me where it went. And I did a write-to-no request. The county provided me that the Sheriff's Office received $945,000 for salaries and benefits. The prison received just shy of $4 million. The 911 center received $1.8 million, and the DA's office received $211,000. Two of those department heads, the row office people, confirmed that they never received or asked for any of that money, and they were both here at a meeting that you guys could have questioned as well. So, again, taxpayers deserve to know, the small businesses, fire companies, and nonprofits, where the $6,996,254.26 is. Why you keep avoiding this and hiding this is beyond me, but it's eight months now. I've been asking this every week. I sent you an email personally, you said to me two weeks ago, you were working on getting the figures together, you'd get back to me. Eight months now, I've been asking this. It's not that hard. You just came up with this. My niece is 70 years old. She could have came up with a better document than this to tell me where the CARES Act money went. And then you're going to tell me that this is where it went, but now you're telling me two weeks ago, you're working on getting the figures together to tell me where it went. Make up my mind. Did it go here or didn't it? Why can't you just tell the taxpayers where the money went? There's businesses shutting down. All of you people own small businesses. I'm sure you know what the struggle's going through. Fire companies, they're struggling. Nonprofits, the grants aren't there anymore either. So, tell the people where the $7 million went. I don't know why it's so hard for us. Also, $23 million for the rescue plan. Why is that not made available? All these other counties have it out there. Most of them have given it out already. What are you doing with the $23 million? Whose pocket's you aligning? Is it more Bob Green money? More ANS? What are you doing with it? The people want to know, small businesses want to know, the nonprofits and fire companies. Give them an answer. Put it online. I know how hard it is to get a budget online until after it's approved. Tell the people where the $23 million and the $7 million went. I think they deserve to know that, so thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Dopp. Anyone else have to give public comment this time? If not, I would like to make a few comments here. I was sitting down this weekend and trying to reflect as to what took place this year. Most of our headlines are about COVID and problems in the county, but there are some major accomplishments. In 2021, the county went through some building renovation projects and preserving our county assets. There was power washing done on the courthouse facade, a major project to repoint the stone walls at the prison. Renovations, the 410 building for mental health, drug and alcohol, senior services, office space, as well as place for District Magisterial Judge Bradley. And as noted here, this will be a place that we have, will be owned and operate as opposed to paying rent. In the prison, we had an air purification HVAC project, major project, with some money from our CARES Fund. The prison had a history of airport quality, and there was a concern about COVID threat. And I think in my mind, I mean, I can't prove it, but I've talked with other counties who had outbreaks of COVID in prisons, and what takes place is the prisoners are sent to hospitals. You have to hire a security to go to that hospital, so avoiding a major outbreak of COVID in our prison was a concern. And I also understand that we used to have wet floors in the summertime, so once again, that air purification HVAC project was a good project, money well spent. Courthouse water consumption was reduced by 40% in 2021. Demolition projects across the county for light control and light removal totaled $636,639. In our Engineering Department, County Bridge 67 was replaced in Forte Township, County Bridge 140 in Barry Township. Airport road was paved with a fuel money, and if you get a chance to drive up, it's a really nice job in a greedy, gray area up there. I also want to commend Senator Argle and his staff member, Chief of Staff Christine Verder. They acquired some extra monies for us to be able to pave the parking lot and provide some lights, which is a public safety issue. Once again, thanks to the Senator's Office and Chief of Staff for getting that together at the same time. It was a great combination project. As far as the row officers, Controller's Office, Sharon Yecenter reported that she was able to acquire $7,500 in unclaimed assets received from the PA Treasury. Prithontary's Office, Bridget did a diversion of all of her paper files from TIF to PDFA formats, discreation, what's needed space in our Archives Department. As far as COVID relief programs, in the Under the CARES Act, we did allocate $1,132,467 for businesses, nonprofits, and municipalities. And once again, I've said this, and I'll say it to the end of my career, anyone who applied and was eligible received funding. No one was turned down. Under CHIRP, which was the Hospitality Income Replacement Recovery Program, one of the problems that happened was the small businesses and large businesses had several opportunities to receive funding, but the hospitality folks seemed to fall through the cracks. A lot of these restaurants are family-owned and don't have a, didn't have a payroll protection plan to administer, so the state provided, the General Assembly provided money. We distributed $1,560,000 to 71 applicants in the hospitality, this hotel/restaurant business category. Right now, there was, there's still $4,000 worth of requests. We ran out of money before, we ran out of applications, and we had some discussions with Commissioners about using some of our American Recovery Fund money to fund these qualified applicants. Under the current program, the CDBG COVID Relief Program, just recently, 22 small businesses received a loan--